I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting. Hard to believe that it's August 20th. Wow, I almost hesitated saying that. It can't be August 20th. It is, and I'm Andy Hunt House and I'll be chairing the meeting today. To my left is Commissioner Tom Rolfe. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
And Brandy Spangler, she'll be taking care of us today. Good morning, Brandy. My right Candace Payne, Commissioner Candace Payne. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nico Hash and Keegan Shade, Deputy County Attorneys. Good morning. And Frank Cornwell, who is our Chief Financial Officer and will be sitting in for Mr. Baltz today. Just a reminder, there are agendas in the front as well as a sign-in sheet. We'd like everyone to sign in prior to leaving today. So we have a good record of who's attended our public meeting. And we will start with consent action items and I'll turn it over to Mr. Cornwell.
Morning Commissioners, thank you very much. We got a couple consent action items for your approval today. For item A, it's a, it's approval of public minutes for October 12th, 2023, March 7th, July 11th, 18th, 23rd, 25th, 30th, August 1st, August 6th, 8th of 2024. And then, uh, action item B for Resolution 2024-90, declaring county property surplus property.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions Commissioners about the consent action items? How about public comment on the consent items? Any public comment on the consent action items? We have meeting minutes and surplus property.
Can I comment about the surplus property? It's railroad cars. I'm used to having computers or desks or railroad cars. Okay, that's all. Looks good.
You bet. All right. Hearing no comment, Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the consent action items, uh, two A and B as explained by Mr. Cornwell.
Second.
Move to second and approve consent action items as presented. Further discussion Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a bid award for the Fairgrounds gravel project.
Morning Commission Chair, Commissioners, uh, for the record, um, Jess Whitford, uh, County Project Construction Coordinator. Uh, August 6th, 2024, three bids were open for the Fairgrounds gravel supply solicitation. The county was soliciting for bids to supply an estimated 7,800 tons of one-inch minus crushed base course gravel for Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds, West Parking area. And the gravel would be, to be supplied between now and October 15th, 2024. Uh, funding for this project comes from an American Recovery and Reinvestment Act known as ARPA grant award. This bid award is in a coordination with Lewis and Clark County Fairgrounds, the City of Helena and Lewis and Clark County Public Works Department for a partnership interlocal agreement. Bids were solicited using two schedules with award based on funding availability. Schedule one requested the unit price for the gravel hauled by the supplier to the fairgrounds. And Schedule two requested the unit price for the gravel to be hauled by county crews. Uh, after review of all bids, staff recommends awarding the bid to the lowest bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel Incorporated of Helena, Montana, for the Schedule one unit price of $9.96 per ton and authorize the Chair to sign in the applicable contract documents. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any questions Commissioners? Um, just for the public's information, they might be wondering, fairgrounds gravel, what are we doing out there? Just to give a highlight of our.
Well, the highlight, the West Parking area, uh, is going to be paved. So we need to haul in additional gravel to support for structural supports for the upcoming paving. And probably starting next week, we'll, uh, with our gravel or asphalt procurement, the, that was awarded probably a couple of weeks ago, we'll start paving the East Parking Lot first. And then when we're done with the East Parking Lot, we'll move to the second or the West Parking Lot, of which we'll receive gravel first and we'll start paving that. Uh, this all come about from the ARPA grant, uh, that was awarded.
Right. Great. Thank you. Yes. So a big project.
Yes, it is. It's a, it's a big project.
See some great changes out there as well as some, um, hard surfaces that are going to be resurfaced.
Yes, yes, both hard surface and resurface.
Right. That's right. Great. Any questions Commissioners? All right. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, move that we approve the bid award for the Fairgrounds gravel as, uh, as discussed by, uh, Mr. Whitford.
Mr. Chair, I would second that.
Move to second and approve the bid award as presented. Further discussion Commissioners? Thank you. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the project. It's going to be.
Thank you. And as always, we, uh,
Quite a change out there.
We appreciate your cooperation. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, Commissioners.
And, and I, one of the things I think that we should just, just mention, uh, part of this is, uh, repairing for the extra wear that was done when, uh, the facility was used so heavily during COVID.
It was, and we used some of our American Rescue Plan dollars, mainly that's what we're using for this project. And so some of the hard surfaces that are already out there are, uh, they were either, uh, chip sealed and/or, uh, millings. And so this will give us an opportunity to actually put down real hard surface and, uh, with the gravel, some base that will give us some durability and longevity out there for parking purposes and hopefully not chasing our tails and repairing and repairing and things falling apart. So, uh, I think it's a good investment. ARPA dollars were intended to do, as Commissioner Rolfe said, you know, respond in some ways to, uh, uh, the COVID impacts and we use that facility for all of the vaccinations and those kinds of things, testing out there. So fairgrounds were shut down for normal operations and used for COVID purposes. So this is a, a good thing and it will be, uh, a great improvement. Anything else Commissioners? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we will hear Resolution 2024-91 to rescind stage one fire restrictions. Who's going to lead us off?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Leo Dutton, L E O D U T T O N. I'm sheriff, coroner, fire warden, and whatever else you guys push my way. So we're here today to recommend to you, or as fire warden, I'm recommending to you to come, uh, back out of stage one fire restrictions after consultation with Rural Fire Council, which includes approximately 14 volunteer fire chiefs, the DNRC Forest Service, last Monday, not yesterday, but, uh, Monday before, that the recommendation, the relative humidity has come up and the issues that stage one would be preventing are no longer required. Kyle will have some more information from Rocky, but I bring to you a recommendation to come back out of stage one and return to, uh, normal, careful uh, behavior with fire. Doesn't mean that you can all of a sudden abdicate all responsibility. It's just the, some of the restrictions we don't need, but I still urge the public to be responsible with campfires, fireworks. Fireworks are not allowed on state lands and they're not allowed on Forest Service, uh, areas of responsibility. So those types of human fires cause problems. We also recommend to the public to be cognizant, it is still dry. And if you saw lightning, that the amount of resources that we have are limited. So be careful. Thank you. I turn it over to, uh, Kyle.
Thank you, Fire Warden Dutton and Sheriff and Coroner and other things.
No, thank you. Uh, my name's Kyle Sturgill Simon, Emergency Manager for Lewis and Clark County. Uh, so does the sheriff and fire warden and coroner mentioned earlier. Um, conditions have been improving in terms of fire danger. Doesn't mean we're necessarily out of the woods yet, so to speak. Um, but the conversation has gone towards, uh, rescinding the stage one fire restrictions. A lot of things go into that conversation, um, fuel moistures, uh, soil moistures, our own capacity here locally, and then also the resource availability, uh, outside of our county. And that's been improving substantially as well. So regionally, we've gone to a preparedness level two. Uh, we were at a preparedness level three, which just means that, uh, for a while there, we were at a heightened risk of not being able to get resources if we should need them. And now it's looking a little bit better in that regard. So the conversation has been going towards, people have been careful. Uh, we asked them to remain careful, um, but we are, um, acceptable, it's acceptable to, uh, rescind the stage one fire restrictions.
Thank you. Questions Commissioners? Just a couple. Uh, so, just so people understand how this works, because there's probably someone in their living room out there maybe saying, wait, it's still really, uh, really hot and I saw lightning last night and how can we do this? So it's not done willy-nilly. Both of you explain that, um, there's careful criteria that it's, uh, assessed. Moisture level, temperature, um, all, all the indicators and the fire council, all the experts get together and, and discuss this, uh, and determine a recommendation whether to move out of stage one or stay in stage one or move, you know, further restrictions, but in this case it's moving out of stage one. So just a little bit more on, um, how that works and how we, uh, make these decisions. It's not, I want people to be assured, it's not willy-nilly. It is, uh, with careful thought, so.
Mr. Chairman, no, it is not willy-nilly. There are several different approaches, being one, the Forest Service, two, the Department of Natural Resources Conservation, the volunteer fire chiefs who understand what kind of indices and what high numbers mean and what low numbers of the potential for the, for just the grassling there or the duff being able to ignite with say a match. So those, those numbers have come down. Uh, earlier, when we had the, uh, the Horse Gulch Fire, it was a very high number. So if you lit a match and dropped it, that potential of a big fire was, uh, very substantial because of the dryness of the fuels of the, um, just the grass. And if you take in logs about this big called a hundred hour fuels, then the big logs or a thousand hour fuels, those were dry. Those were drier than what you would get in a kiln. Relative humidity has come up. Those things that they measure have come up. Also, the issue of resources, we can get a few more resources. There was a lot of discussion about this and what we could do, what is, what is stage one doing? Really for us, law enforcement, if the, the Forest Service votes come out of stage one and the state lands come out of state, stage one, and we don't, and a campground right next to a federal area, could be a county campground, next to a federal one, uh, the feds can have a fire, the one that's county owned cannot. And they're, say they're a hundred yards apart and we go to issue a citation, we're going to lose in court because of the meteorological conditions can't change that much within a hundred yards. So when they go to court saying, we had a fire, but a hundred yards over there, they had, I mean, they did, we couldn't have a fire. A hundred yards over there, they could. What change in those 100 yards? So the coordination, the central, the central region is essential that we all try to stay the same. So enforcement is, uh, applicable and fair. If we, if we do it willy-nilly, it's very difficult to enforce willy-nilly rules. Uh, some have, some don't, and it's not defensible when we go to court because we have to present that information about why we gave a citation, why you made that decision. That's what we're giving a citation off of. You're relying on the experts to tell you or recommend to you that you should or should not. And when we issue the citation based on that decision, we have to present that same information to court. So this is in combination with our partners in the central land that we participate every Tuesday morning. So that's, that's the coordination part. There, there is a lot to it to come to this recommendation to you. I can't move that in and out, but I, I recommend that you do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'd also add that, uh, the conversation doesn't stop after this resolution either. Uh, we still meet regularly with all of our firefighting partners and we make sure that those conditions are still being monitored throughout the summer and so that we can make further recommendations. So, um, it definitely doesn't stop here. We keep an eye on it. We still meet regularly. The discussion goes on.
So i- if next week temperatures went back into the hundreds and, um, things dried out and it became necessary to move the other direction, that, that recommendation might come forward as well. You know, we never know. So it's all based on the condition.
That's possibility. What we don't like is playing yo-yo.
Yeah, right.
Making it, what we're trying to do is give the responsibility to the people. Uh, when we move in and out, that's why we decided with, uh, debris burning to close it for two months, but not open and close, open and close. That's confusing to the people we work for. And it takes away their personal responsibility about, you should check the weather. You should be responsible to have that type of material. If you're burning something, you can't just light it and walk away. If we keep opening and closing, it shifts the burden to us when we're not the one striking the match. One striking the match is liable through the, the court of law and that's what we need to enforce. But you're correct. If, if things were to go to extreme, we would meet, look at what are the benefits of going back or maybe in the stage two, maybe even more than what we had. Stage one is, is, uh, the least restrictive that you can. Stage two is next. Stage three is very, very restrictive. Don't, don't drag anything on a rock. It's, uh, that, that moisture is, can be ignited very easily and we're not there. So we, as Kyle said, we'll continue to talk about those and what's happening. But we try not to make you guys go, oh, we're, we're out and then we're in and people are confused.
No, it's a good point. Very good point. Thank you for that. Um, it just, conditions in general as well. I, I, I was encouraged, uh, by the, uh, discussion at Fire Council the other night, a week ago or so, um, with the Forest Service and they kind of gave their report. They were talking about above 5,000 feet or 5,500 feet, conditions were really improving that there with the moisture levels and, and those kinds of conditions were, uh, trending very positively. It's down in this lower area. We're still quite dry grass and all of that. But really a cautionary, um, message for people to, to be careful. So moving out of stage one doesn't mean to, uh, you know, that you don't have to worry about it anymore. It's still a very serious time and, uh, I don't know if we want to talk about the conditions at all, any, any further. But, uh, you're welcome. You don't have to, but you're welcome to if you'd like, uh, and we'll move on. But any other questions Commissioners? Okay. Anything else gentlemen? Thank you very much. Really appreciate you bringing this to us and the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay. How about public comment on a resolution to rescind stage one fire restrictions? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-91 to rescind sa- stage one fire restrictions, as explained by, um, Sheriff Dutton and, um, Mr. Sturgill Simon.
Second.
Move to second and approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion Commissioners? Again, thank you. Appreciate it. And to the Fire Council and all the others that have, uh, contributed, all our partners out there. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. We move on. Next item on the agenda is a contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great Western Recreation. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. For the record, Angie Hubbard, Planner for Lewis and Clark County Community Development and Planning. You have before you today a contract with Great Western Recreation for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Treasure State Acres Park in the amount not to exceed $95,000. Treasure State Acres Park is an eight acre county owned parkland located within Treasure State Acres subdivision, east of North Montana and adjacent to Wolverine Drive. Funding for the playground equipment installation comes from Treasure State Acres Park District Fund in the amount of $30,000. The City County Parks Board Maintenance and Improvement Grant that's funded by cash and lieu parkland dedication requirements under MCA 70, 763621 in the amount of $48,400. A donation from Treasure State Acres Homeowners Association in the amount of $11,000 and a donation from Helena Youth Lacrosse in the amount of $2,500. The project will include removal of the concrete and existing playground equipment except the slide, removal of the gravel base and replace, replacement with engineered wood fiber, installation of a swing set with an adaptive chair, play panels, balancing items, a picnic table and two benches. And this is a rendition of what the playground equipment will look like.
Could you go back please? I'd like to look at that a little more. Thank you. Okay.
In your packet, there's a picture as well.
This one's good. Big.
The total of cost of the project will not exceed $95,000. This project went through the full procurement process for goods and services over $80,000 and the notice of intent to award was posted for Great Western Recreation on May 31st, 2024. The contract has been negotiated and fully executed by Great Western Recreation. The contract cover sheet has been fully executed by Lewis and Clark County Purchasing Officer, Lewis Clark County Financial Officer and the Director of Community Development and Planning. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much for that thorough explanation. Questions Commissioners?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, it appears that, uh, the money is coming from the neighborhood involved, uh, pretty, pretty extensively plus grants and then donations from maybe some of the people that use the park as a regular, on a regular basis. Um, seems to me like a great neighborhood project.
Absolutely. Anything else? How about public comment on this item? Please, if anyone is interested in making comment, just come on up to the microphone. If you'd give us your name, address and, uh, if you have a role.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, my name is John Wilkins. I'm a trustee of the Treasure State Acres Park.
Okay.
And I'm a resident of the neighborhood. Um, we've got our playground equipment that's been out there that used to be at Memorial Park. Over 25 years ago, that was replaced Memorial Park and that's where we got our playground equipment. So we've been working with Angie and she's been doing a great job seeing this project through for about 10 months now. And so we would, uh, very much like your, uh, approval of finalizing this contract and moving on to the construction phase. Just, uh, your approval would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comment. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. Commissioners, hearing none. Any questions? If there isn't, a motion would be appropriate this time.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great Western Recreation as, uh, explained by Angie Hubbard.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to second this. Again, I think it's a great neighborhood project and, and a lot of involvement by users and whatnot. Uh, thanks to the community out there for stepping up and getting this rolling.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. And I'd just say thank you, Angie, and the neighborhood. This is how it is supposed to work and is designed to work in terms of, uh, projects being brought forward, vetted by the, uh, Parks Board, I'm sure. And that, uh, contribution from City County Parks Fund, um, is designed to augment, um, community efforts and other grants and things that, uh, users that bring money forward. So it's exactly how it's supposed to work and those projects are, are brought to that board for consideration and brought through the process. So, um, that's how it happened, right?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, that's correct and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion to second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, how about a vote? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. Appreciate it Angie. Next item on the agenda is an interlocal agreement between Lewis Clark County and the City of Helena. Good morning, sir.
Morning. Morning Chairman Commissioners. Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning. As you mentioned today, I'll be presenting two, um, two items on the agenda that are closely related on the ongoing efforts between the city and county's, uh, joint infrastructure study, uh, being conducted by the county and the city. That first item before you is the interlocal agreements with the City of Helena in regards to that joint infrastructure study. As you see within your staff report, this agreement between the county and the city is to join into a study of the existing and future non-city to city infrastructure within an urban stand, urban standards boundary. Uh, you recall the urban growth area, urban standards boundary is an area outside of city limits that the city and the county have identified, uh, together as an area of planning for future intensive development. These infrastructure items will include to be studied water, wastewater treatment, stormwater, solid waste facilities and transportation systems. Uh, as you read in the staff report, this project will be completed by the consultant, Great West Engineering, with a total cost of $351,678. As part of that local agreement, the cost of the project will be split 50/50 between the city and the county. The county share will be 1,000, 175,839 dollars and planned to be funded through the ARPA money received by the county. As laid out in the interlocal agreements with the county, will lead on the project, managing it through that process. The anticipated completion of this project is August 31st, 2025, though the interlocal agreement is scheduled to last for two years after it's signed. The interlocal agreement between the city and the county has been reviewed by legal department and signed by the City of Helena manager following the approval by the City of Helena Commission on Monday, July 29th, 2024. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval. I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions Commissioners? Please.
If I might, um, who, how, how did we set the, the red outlined bound, boundary?
So, um, Chairman Commissioners, the, um, urban growth study area was identified through the previous, uh, growth plan, um, that was done in, I'm, I'm blanking. I think it was 2014, 2016, 16. Um, identified as an area of, um, that the county and the shitty, city should focus on where intensive development would likely occur. Um, so that became the boundary of the, uh, joint infrastructure study. And that's, uh, both, um, within the county and the cities of growth plans.
Is there, uh, what, what process to pass? Do we have to go through to make some boundary changes?
Um, Chairman Commissioner, uh, boundary changes to the, to the, to the growth
Mm-hmm.
area. Um, that is, was, was identified through that growth policy. So I imagine you would have to go through that as we're currently going through a growth plan.
Start with the growth, growth policy.
Correct. Yeah. As an identified area, but that, um, boundary was just adopted for this study.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And just to add to that, I think, yeah, and, uh, this boundary is agreed upon by the city and county through that last growth policy process and, 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 uh, urban standards boundary. And I think that, um, it's identified also in our, our zoning documents. It's, I think we matched those boundaries for the urban growth area or the, the, yeah, urban, urban growth area in zoning. So I think that's the part of it, but absolutely can be looked at and will be looked at through the, the growth policy rewrite, which is happening now. I mean, that process has started now, so.
Just maybe a follow, a follow-up if, if, uh, as we're looking at a new growth policy and maybe there were some. and maybe there were some tweaks to be done on the, on the boundary, would it be easy to to incorporate those into the, into the study, or would that be?
Chairman, Commissioner, I, as we're moving for the growth policies, kind of, we're looking at it as like a, I believe, another six-month process till that's completed. If there are changes to that, I believe the study could potentially look at, you know, areas of concern, to future, look at future areas. But I think the, the, yeah, the work with the consultant, we're specifically looking at this boundary at this time, yeah.
Yeah. I guess my, my main concern, Mr. Chair, is, is, you know, we're going through that process now, looking at the urban growth policy. We've got some places where the, where the more populated areas kind of bumping out and changing the boundaries a little bit. And, and it would be unfortunate not to be sure that we incorporate that one in, in this, in this study, if at all possible.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Anything further? Further discussion? Okay. And I think Mr. Mr. Commissioner Rolfe, Mr. McNally, when he returns, it might be a good discussion to have just about how these boundaries, why these were chosen, and what what significant factors went into drawing these where they are in terms of growth, access, water, sewer, all those kinds of things. There was lots of different pieces that went into that, and I think that there is significant reasoning behind it, and it's in the growth policy. But Mr. McNally can surely describe that to you. And if there are future iterations of this urban growth boundary, then we can surely change that and either augment the study with another or something else. But it should, this should give us a pretty good understanding in terms of the joint project of where some of those major infrastructure issues should be trending, I think, even with this, this boundary. And on the east side, you know, the reason it kind of skirts around East Helena there, a lot of that will be under the jurisdiction and responsibility of East Helena to develop their urban growth area and infrastructure there. But not that we won't have some crossover. But anyway, that just, just for discussion purpose.
Yes, yes. That's, yes, ma'am.
To you.
Yes. I'd like to point out on page eight of the contract that Phil has described is a schedule showing the milestones. And here at the bottom of the page, and it clearly shows the public meetings, the work sessions, that this is not being done as a quick draw, let's hurry up and get this done. This is very carefully thought out. We've got a schedule. It is open to the public. If people want to, if they've got concerns or comments, their public meetings are going on through April of twenty twenty-five, it looks to me like. And here again, this is not something that has been taken lightly. It's seriously considered, and I'll bet if, if people came in and actually attended the public meetings, I know sometimes the county holds public meetings, and the only people who show up are, are the county employees. So let's encourage the public to come in and take part in this opportunity to have some say about this infrastructure study. And, yeah, this is a great opportunity. That's all.
It is. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, beyond the boundaries, I would, I would agree. I just want to make a comment. You sparked something with me that this is an open, transparent process. It's going to be a lot of public and stakeholder interaction, both for the city and the county. And I'm excited about this. We've been talking about this for a really long time. And as we progress through the zoning process, the three years that it took to get zoning through, it was a very public and transparent process as well. We've discussed the urban growth area and the impacts of city growth potentially and where services and infrastructure might go. So this joint study was contemplated then and finally here, and I'm really excited for the results of it because one of the, one of the results of this potentially is a real guidance to how we get more housing stock on the ground, where it's going to go, the densities and the capacities we have. If we have the infrastructure plan in place, developers will have a little more idea of, well, that piece of ground makes sense because I know that there's going to be city pipes and water and sewer, and I can get these kind of densities out of it and add this kind of, you know, stock to the, to the housing. Housing stock that's out there, I guess, is what I meant to say. So I'm excited for this, and I think it's something that we've been wanting to do for a really long time and needing to do for a really long time. So I'm in full support. Any other comments?
Just, just maybe one, one other question, and that is, how, how would this dovetail with the, with the work of what used to be the Transportation Department in Kenab, and all this, the Metropolitan Planning Area organization?
Chairman, Commissioners, I believe some, the results of, of the study, at least from the county's perspective, is to help to dovetail some of the zoning and many potential incentives between the city and the county for, for development. That specific question you have, I wouldn't be entirely able to answer on my own. But I'd be, weren't happy looking to, and get back to you on something like that.
All right. I think it's important to have all these studies to where they work together and instead of against each other.
Certainly.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioners? All right, how about public comment on this? Interlocal agreement. Public comment. Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the interlocal agreement between Lewis and Clark County and the City of Helena as explained by Mr. Gonzalez.
Second.
Moved as second to approve the interlocal agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, the next one is contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering.
Chairman, Commissioners, again, Phil Gonzalez here with Community Development and Planning, and I am here to present the joint infrastructure contract between Lewis and Clark County and the consultant, Great West Engineering, to perform a joint infrastructure study of the current existing and future non-city-to-city infrastructure within the urban standards boundary. As mentioned previously, we have an approved interlocal agreement between the City of Helena and the county Lewis Clark County to split that cost of that study, which totals three hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Costs will be paid fifty-fifty by the county and the city. Each jurisdiction will have to pay one hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine. The county's share will be paid from the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act funds received by the county. Again, as I mentioned previously, the study is being completed to examine that infrastructure, which includes water, wastewater treatment, stormwater, solid waste facilities, and transportation systems. The anticipated date of this completion of the study is August thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. The infrastructure plan will understand what is needed to upgrade existing systems to meet joint infrastructure standards, as well as develop a prioritization plan for future systems, connections, and a plan for, and potential annexations. The plan, when completed, will also use projected growth estimates to develop recommendations for future public facilities necessary to serve developed and undeveloped areas within this boundary. The intended use of the plan, when completed, will serve as a tool for planning and development and guide determinating, determinations of recommended improvements for cost-effective and expansion of public facilities. While the study is a joint undertaking between the city and the county, the county will take an administrative role in managing that contract. Chairman, Commissioners, you can see on the map on the screen was also, is the, that boundary that we've been discussing. It's also within the staff reports. The urban standards boundary represented in red, just a description, the most northern portion extends along Sierra Road. Eastern extends along Pickley Pear Creek, the southern, along the county line, and the western boundary along the Fort Harrison area. Now, the USB or the urban standards boundary is represented in the county's Helena Valley Growth Policy of twenty sixteen, and the City of Helena's growth plan identified as potential high-growth area in those documents. In the City of Helena's growth plan, excuse me, according to Helena's growth policy, property located within this boundary should be given quote priority for future annexations, extensions of water, and wastewater services. As Commissioner Payne pointed out, the scheduled project schedule is within the staff report, and that was provided by the consultant. You'll notice the completion date, as mentioned, of June twenty twenty-five, though that has been extended as we've been a little bit slower to get the kickoff of this project moving. Though the image, you can get a glimpse of the projected milestones, including public meetings, creation of a website, progressive evaluation of system drafts, draft alternatives, joint work sessions between the public and different group, interested groups, and a final presentation to this commission. And the end of a project closeout, as mentioned, projected to be August of twenty twenty-five. As you've read throughout the staff report, the project is broken up generally into seven work tasks that you'll see on the screen. That will begin once the kickoff of the, of this project commences. Just generally, first, project management and administration, just the, includes the work that has gotten us up to here with several meetings with consultant, city, and county drafted scopes of work, and final signing of the contract. Secondly, meeting work sessions seeks to coordinate several meetings between consultants, discuss project schedules, obtain input. The consultant will also schedule three in-person work sessions between interested stakeholders. Third, existing systems will encompass the analysis of all existing infrastructure within that boundary area, which will include the water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste, and transportations. Four, we're looking at existing populations and projected growth areas to determine existing and projected infrastructure needs. Task five will look at options for infrastructure connections depending on systems based on city standards. And six will include the draft and final study of that infrastructure plan with deliverables. And final task will be public involvement, which will include those public meetings and presentation to this commission of final findings. Please note the attached contract you're asked to consider is within the staff report. It's been reviewed by county purchasing department and our legal department. And with that, county staff recommends approval, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Can you go back one slide just for me? I just wanted to point out Commissioner Rolfe's question in the last item related to number four, and it looks like they're going to do an analysis of the growth area and the projections. And so that could be where they say, while this boundary may not be adequate, or maybe just right, or maybe too big, I don't know. So but they're going to do an analysis of that, of that area, growth area. And so that's good.
Good.
So thank you for bringing that up. All right. Any other comments or questions? How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this contract? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract between Lewis and Clark County and Great West Engineering as described by Planner Phil Gonzalez.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the contract as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, if I might, I just, I want to say that I really feel good about having our planning department working, being in charge of this plan. And I'm, I'm really pleased that you've taken the initiative to do this. Thanks for asking my, answering my questions as well, and, and I'm looking forward to some, some great progress that'll help us as our community continues to grow.
Aye, as well. I'm looking forward to this. This is a good day in my mind. All right, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right. That one is launched. I'm excited. Here how it goes here. So next item on the agenda is a board appointment for Baxendale Volunteer Fire District. Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, good morning. Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections. I bring before you today the first of two board appointments for the Baxendale Volunteer Fire District. This one is a case of a former board member being a little bit late with their paperwork. So Steve Urb has been a member of the board for Baxendale for some time. And his seat was up for election this year, and he's now finally getting around to the paperwork. So we're happy to have him back on board. He is still a resident of the district, and no one else applied for the spot. So the seat has been just waiting for him to return to it, I'd say. So with everything in mind, staff recommends approval of Steve Urb being appointed to the Baxendale Volunteer Fire District Board of Trustees for a full three-year term, as per statute listed, listed in the memo there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, how about any questions? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none? Your motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the board appointment to the Baxendale Volunteer Fire District as presented by Connor Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the appointment as presented. Further discussion?
Just, I think we need to thank Mr. Urb for his involvement in the past and, and just try to encourage more people to get involved in these, in these voluntary boards to make a big difference in our community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I, yes. Comment. I'm also appreciative of Steve Urb's agreement to continue his service. Part of, being part of a volunteer fire district or any other of these boards is is figuring out the differences between the members, so they aren't so busy lobbing cannonballs into each other's camp, that they can't keep the good of the community in mind, thereby making decisions that are not my team against your team. It's, it's all our team. And we sometimes see this in the volunteer fire districts, and I appreciate everybody's passion on this, but sometimes you just need to sit down, get the work done. And from what I understand, the Baxendale Volunteer Fired District, it does just that. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Round to the next one, which is a board appointment for the Augusta Volunteer Fire District.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you. This one has been, this particular seat has been vacant for a few years now. I believe the previous member holding this seat was, gosh, I think it was, it was another one of the Geece family. I believe it was Kyle Geece, if I remember correctly. But now we have Kurt Geece stepping up to fill in the seat. After checking to make sure Kurt is a registered resident within the Augusta Volunteer Fire District and confirming that information, we bring forward Kurt Geece as a trustee to be appointed for the Augusta Volunteer Fire District Board of Trustees until next May, when, when that term is up in a regular cycle, in which case, if he chooses, he can run for it again. Considering it's been open for almost a whole term now, I would say it's probably going to hinge on whether he wants to run for it more than anything. So happy to answer any questions, but otherwise, we recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Fitzpatrick, how many people sit on the Augusta Volunteer Board?
Fire Board? Mr. Chair, Commissioner, Kurt Geece would bring that up to five people total, which is a full complement of any of our local fire district boards.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Any other questions? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? All right, hearing none, is there a motion please Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to completely approve the appointment of Kurt Geece to the Augusta Volunteer Fire District Board.
Second.
Move and second to approve the appointment as presented, further discussion Commissioners?
Again, I just appreciate the Geece family and, and their involvement in the community, both up there and, and also countywide. And I really encourage folks to take a look at the boards and committees that are available. We've got a list of, of boards that need members, and if they take a look on the website and, and take a look at them and get their application in. Government works best when people get involved, and we appreciate them doing this.
Thank you Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, if I may add to that a little bit more, the boards that Commissioner Rolf is speaking of are boards that are appointed by the county commissioners. There are a further few boards that if folks are interested, they can reach out to the Lewis and Clark County Elections Office to see if there's an opening or not. These include the county's various fire districts, our One Park District that I was very happy to see was bringing forward that playground equipment contract earlier, Hospital District, Water Sewer Districts across county. Those ones are elected positions, so therefore they are, essentially I get to bring appointments forward or they get to run at a competitive election. So if they are not finding a board that they are interested in that the county commissioners could appoint, which I believe those are things such as cemetery district boards, I think the solid waste district board is another one of those, then they can reach out to the county elections office and see if we do have an opening that might be more their speed as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
You bet.
All right Commissioners, we have a motion and a second to approve this appointment. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you.
All right, we are at that time in the meeting where we will take public comment on any matter that is under the jurisdiction of the commission, but not on today's agenda. Is there any public comment? Any public comment? Mr. Fitzpatrick, welcome back.
Connor Fitzpatrick, Lewis and Clark County Elections, Elections Division Supervisor. It's that time of year again. We're gearing up for the general election, folks, so as you all probably know and can't escape the political ads for, an election is coming up here in November. We've had a lot of folks come through our office seeking to update their registration if you even suspect you need your registration updated. Feel free to check out the My Voter page through the Montana Secretary of State's office or give our office a contact at 406, or, God, wow, I almost gave my cellphone number in a public meeting, oofta. Let me refrain my, reframe my memory here, 406-447-8339 is our office. Please give that a call and we'll check out for you what your record looks like, what your status is, et cetera. I apologize for almost giving my cellphone number here. Got to get my brain here back to work mode. So do check into your voter registration status so you don't have to wait in line on election day with a lot of other people that are doing the same thing last minute. So if you have any other questions about the election, I know there's a lot of exciting things flying around in the world right now, folks. So if you have any questions about whether what you're seeing online is true or not, or is just being thrown out there to quote Sheriff Dutton willy-nilly today, do contact the elections office. I know I'm a nerd on this stuff. Our staff are super interested, otherwise they wouldn't be working in such an exciting job and in such an exciting year. And, you know, if we don't know the answer there into your question, we will at least try to give you a lead on where you can find that answer. So we're happy to help, folks, and we'll see you all on the other side of this election. I'm sure I'll be up here a couple of times doing a few updates as well, so here we go.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. And Commissioner, just for your information, I'm planning, as a chair, to invite Mr. Fitzpatrick and maybe Amy Reeves, a treasurer, clerk, and recorder, if she'd like to come, to one of our meetings in early September, mid-September, to give an elections update, and then maybe right when, near the time the ballots go out to the public, just for another update about how things are going, where people can find information, those kinds of things. So just giving you a heads up, I'll be planning to put them on the agenda for a couple of meetings here prior to the elections. Thank you. All right, any other public comment? Any other public comment? Hearing no further public comment, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all very much.